In act, in BSL, over 35 communities in Kansas have repealed their breed bans. Since 2018, over 47 communities have repealed breed bans, Denver being the latest. In January of 2020, Denver City Council member Chris Herden led the charge proposing the 31-year ban on pit bull type dogs be repealed. On February 10th, 2020, history was made by a vote of seven to four, Denver's ban had fallen. Then on February 14th, the mayor took it upon himself to veto the council's decision. Fast forward to November 3rd, 2020, the voters of Denver showed the mayor by an overwhelming majority of 65.4% that his veto was now vetoed by them. In the summer of 2015, I did what I call an informal petition, and one person, 16 weekends, got over 1,500 signatures, most of them being registered voters that wanted the repeal. I think it's time that we let the voters of Salina decide what's best for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Norman Manles, Salina, you know what Wednesday is?
Veterans Day.
And there's nothing on any of your proclamations addressing it are going to acknowledge us veterans or nothing. Shame on you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from citizens? Okay, with that, we will move through the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of November 2nd, 2020.
Okay, well, you only have one item on there. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
I have a motion to second approve the minutes for November 2nd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 4-0. That will lead us to administration.
Item 7.1, resolution number 20-7898, recognizing applicants and allocating funds for the 2020 Kansas Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus.
Okay, Ms. Driscoll.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Sorry, I brought, I brought notes. In review, you may remember, July 27th of this year, we were awarded $169,200 of Community Development Block Grant CV or Coronavirus dollars, commonly referred to as CDBG CV. Of that money, the allocation breaks out to $119,200 of Economic Development Mini Grant monies, $35,000 of Meal Program Grants, and then $15,000 for administration of the grant. On August 10th of 2020, the city commission did pass resolution 20-7863 approving the grant agreement with Kansas Department of Commerce for this grant, along with authorization for the mayor to execute the grant agreement and associated implementation and administration documents, including our grant administration agreement with North Central Regional Planning Commission. I will say they have been vital in this process. There is a lot of data verification. Typically, CDBG grants require that a certified CDBG administrator assist a city. They are that. Normally, it's an environmental review that's one of the bigger hurdles for these, not nearly in this, but the LMI verifications and the receipt and invoice verifications have been hefty, and so we have very much appreciated their help in this and their experience having gone through the first round of funding. We are second round funded applicants, so they did bring some great experience to that that I think has been time-saving for our applicants and very helpful. Addition, just some basic information about this grant for those who aren't familiar with it, no match monies are required, and this is managed through the Department of Commerce. So as staff works or says "the state," that's who we're talking about, is Department of Commerce. And no applicant could apply outside of the city, so you couldn't have applied directly to the state, you'd have to apply through us. As a reminder, the economic development dollars that we spoke of, the $119,200, are broken up into two categories. Those are for five or less full-time employees, and then the other category under economic development is between six and 50 full-time employees. And what this grant looks at is businesses are eligible, and they have 51% of their employees qualifying under LMI or low to moderate income. Based on the size of those businesses, they can get a maximum amount awarded per employee or for their total business, depending on whichever is more. The Meal Program that we spoke of goes to a nonprofit, and there is no maximum cap on that. The LMI qualifying feature is based on the geographical location of where the services are provided for in the Meal Program. So it also has its own LMI qualifier, but slightly different than economic development. As we talked about with you in August, we had a very, I think, a fairly aggressive outreach campaign to try and get people aware of this in a fairly short amount of time. You know, these are emergency dollars, so in addition to trying to get this out, many of our businesses needed to move quickly. We advertised, did a press release, advertised in the paper for both Meal Programs and Economic Development, built a webpage for as kind of an informational landing spot for both these items, and kept them together, even though the application windows were slightly different, and also had this information available on the city's social media sites. The webpage is still out there and created. We've been building upon that and plan on using it throughout this program or throughout this process. We also, in addition, for the Meal Program, since we had contacted Meal Program providers before applying for this grant to see need and things like that, we also had that list and emailed them additionally to make sure they were aware of the monies, in addition to the media postings and things like that. The application window for the Economic Development Grant was from August 15th of 2020 through September 11th of 2020. The Meal Program window was from September 9th, 2020 to October 9th, 2020. The state had recommended us using a three to four-week window, depending on availability of staff and things like that. This call for applications resulted in the city getting 10 Economic Development Applications and one Meal Program Application. Once we received those applications, we had to go through kind of several levels of verifying in order to get to you tonight with our recommendations for awarding to those sub-receipients. So the first level is just general eligibility. That's looking at some of the just basic information that we asked the applicants as they applied to make sure that they complied with our basic state criteria. That was business location. You had to be within the city of Salina. So the state had, or the county, I should say, had some of its own money, and the state was very particular in where the businesses needed to be located. You had to have started your business before March 1st of 2020, so if you hadn't, you were not eligible. Current status of your taxes, you had to be in good standing. If you had an arrangement with the state taking care of taxes in the rears, that still did not allow for eligibility, and we did verify that with the state. And any conflict with other financial relief programs being participated in. I think many businesses and nonprofits are happy to have access to some of these funds, but I also think there's a bit of fatigue right now because there are a lot of things and different programs out there, and everybody's trying to keep them straight. So part of this is there, there are some little catches in these, if you're in one of the other programs, you might not have been eligible for this. So we had to double-check to see what other monies people had been receiving. After that general eligibility verification process, two businesses of the original 10 Economic Development Applications were no longer eligible due to taxes in the rears. And both, as I mentioned, both organizations said that they did have a payment program with the state, but that the state was not in favor of, of making those eligible applications. After that general eligibility, we went to the LMI or Low to Moderate Income Verification. Applicants were asked to submit income verification forms for each employee that would have qualified. Part of one of the services that North Central Regional Planning Commission helped us with was going through and verifying the information on those forms were in fact correct. And part of that process is making sure that depending on the category, whether that smaller economic development group of five or less full-time employees or six to 50, of those jobs, at least 51% of those were LMI, and not just the employee, but the employee's family. So that was critical in understanding that piece. For the Food Program, we had to verify that the services being provided were provided in the LMI census tracts, which are 1, 2, 3, and 5 of the city of Salina. So after doing the LMI verification, the Food Program was verified, and of the eight remaining Economic Development Applications, two did not qualify. They did not have enough LMI employees. So that took our number of Economic Development Applications from the original 10 down to six, and then the One Meal Program remained. Next was funding verification, and this is a critical step that I think North Central Regional Planning Commission, if they hadn't told us this, the state wouldn't have told us either, and we were happy to verify that they recommended we do it, but it was never in any of the paperwork they sent. This is a reimbursement-type grant, meaning we have to send in verification from the applicants of whatever funding they need. But the eligibility requirements are fairly strict, and what's even more strict is typically that's an invoice or proof of payment, but it also needs to show that that payment was made. So for instance, if you bought a new piece of equipment or new inventory on a credit card, you also had to show payment of the credit card. So for some reimbursement pieces, this is like three or four pieces of documentation deep, so there was a lot of verifying, but what North Central Regional Planning Commission shared with us when they went through first round of funding is, just like we're doing here tonight, many municipalities went through general eligibility and LMI verification, made their award recommendations on what the businesses said they needed and what they qualified for, but then they started taking receipts and doing this submittal to the state, and many of their expenses weren't eligible. And so they had then go back to the elected body and say, oh, sorry, this person said they needed this much, but they're actually only eligible for this much. Where this becomes a problem is that's money on the table that could have been reallocated to other recipients. So we made the choice, after verifying that that was okay with the state, to actually do all our funding verification upfront. So depending on what you do tonight, we will literally be putting our funding request in tomorrow to get these folks their funds. We're lined up and ready to do that because we've done all of our reimbursement paperwork ahead of time. That funding verification is, and what's allowed, I'm going to speak to the Economic Development Grant because that's really where it's most pertinent, is they are allowed to purchase up to 60 days of consecutive inventory, and then that also includes rent, mortgage payments, payroll, utilities, all utilities except for city utilities. For instance, water, government frowns on the government paying the government for something, insurance, and then other types of maintenance expenses. So after having those verified as the correct types of things, and then having the accurate documentation that could verify not only the expense, but the payment of that expense, we were able to take all the remaining six micro, or sorry, six Economic Development Applications, and you'll see, we provided a table that shows the amount that they requested, the eligibility max based on that criteria that came from the state, and then what we verified were actual expenses that could be reimbursed based on the documentation they provided. And so you'll see significant differences in verified eligible amounts, which what they had the paperwork for, what they were eligible for, and the amount requested. What we found is, and I think it's a good thing, is of those Economic Development Applications, four of the six were eligible for, they couldn't reach their maximum amount, but many could get at least their requested amount, if not a little bit more. We had two entities, and I'm going to name them specifically, I mean, it's all on the blue sheet, but it's easier to identify them that way without naming everybody each time, but for two entities, The Marketplace, or I'm sorry, The Market Shop LLC and Artistic Nails and Spa, their amount requested, and then what they were actually eligible for expense-wise, and what the grant allowed them to pursue, they, they had more expenses than what they had originally requested, and they were eligible for more money. They were the two that were eligible for more, had the documentation for more, and after we were able to, when making recommendation, if we took the four that had verified eligible expenses and actually fully award each of their eligible expenses, they had all the paperwork in place, yes, we could cover all of that, it left us with a small amount of money that we could cover the amount requested by Market Shop LLC plus an additional $1,153.21, and that is an equal division of the remaining $2,306.40. So basically, after funding everybody as much as we could, of the first four, Airliner Motel, Metzger Homes, Vivid Salon, and Tappy Raton Hospitality, we had a little over $2,000 left. We equally divided that and recommend awarding that to Market Shop LLC and Artistic Nails and Spa because that would allow them to not only cover their verified eligible expenses, and that works in, it works with their amount requested, and gives them a little bit more because they had the verification through invoices to accept additional funds. Ending with the Meals Program and recommended award, Meals on Wheels was able to provide more than enough documentation, but at least $35,000 of documentation showing that they could handle those eligible expenses within the LMI qualified census tracts that were necessary, and we recommend awarding them the full $35,000 as there were no other applicants in the Meal Program, and there is no limit on the amount of funding given to any one applicant in the Meal Program, different to the recommend, or different than the requirements under Economic Development. Fiscal note related to this, there is no identified direct city expense other than the staff time associated with this. The assistance from North Central Regional Planning Commission is an expense that's paid for through the $15,000 allocated as part of this grant for administration. With that, staff has identified the following options for the city commission's consideration: Approve Resolution 20-7898 authorizing applicants and allocating funding for the 2020 Kansas Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus. Approve Resolution 20-7898 with amendments the city commission deems appropriate, or postpone consideration of Resolution 20-7898 to the specified date and time, provide city staff direction regarding additional information or amendments to the city commission would like to see, and request for further consideration, or for decline approved Resolution 20-7898 resulting in the city of Salina not administering the grant in a timely manner for its intended purposes. I should add, as a final note, these funds, half of the CDBG CV funds need to be expended within the first six months of having the grant. We were allocated in July, which basically means we have to expend at least half of our money by early January. We are definitely on track to do that. Our businesses that we have approved, if awarded tonight, in our first allocation request, will basically do all of our funding, and there are no additional requests coming out of our applicants, so we will meet that January timeline as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I take it that six-month requirement is based on when we spend the money, not when the applicant necessarily spends it?
Not when we spend it. It's based on when we were awarded and then when we give it to the sub-receipients. And since it's a reimbursement, they've already spent it.
They've already spent it, all right.
What is Metzger Homes?
That is, they do, they do some home building, but primarily a property maintenance company. They, they help to manage properties. They were actually my landlord when I first moved here, so that's how I'm familiar with them. But they have employees, they, they do home repair and manage rental properties.
And where did the food bank fall in this? Is that providing meals or?
The food bank does provide meals. They did not apply for the grant. We did notify them. They were part of the original group of Meal Program Providers that we knew just from, you know, there's only so many of those entities in the community. We're actually one of the few communities that applied for the Meal Program dollars. Celine County did not, and many of the other communities North Central Regional Planning Commission are working with did not apply for it. It's kind of labor-intensive to figure out the LMI part, and I think some of the initial information we got back from the food bank was, they had the need, it was COVID-related, but if somebody comes in the door and you're giving them food, knowing what census tract they came from is harder. We knew probably the most likely candidates were those that dropped off food because they know where the address is, they know it's in that census tract, and the verification the state was willing to accept was, was the easiest to verify, but we didn't want anyone to feel like they couldn't try, and they knew about it upfront, so we just kept notifying through, through the whole process and let that decision be up to them.
How about the ones that didn't prove up their expenses? Was there some give and take between us or North Central about, you know, hey, you're short on these items, do you have any more documentation to, or did we just go through their list and cross out the ones that didn't fit?
Well, they had to have done some initial previewing of that. I mean, in the application, we say what is, what's, what are eligible expenses, and so they had to provide some level of documentation when they applied, just to make sure their numbers weren't so out there. And then, once they got through those first two levels and we got to the funding verification stuff, that's when they handed us everything, and you started looking through stuff going, okay, what you thought was qualifying documentation, or what you thought was part of rent is really not part of that, or inventory, or some of those things. And those things that, that got pulled out of that list, I mean, our staff, North Central Regional Planning Commission staff, verified that if there was anything of question, we asked the state to make sure, how, how would they look at that documentation if they said that's not enough? And they couldn't provide alternate documentation as the applicant, then it had to come off the list.
Do we know what North Central Kansas charged us for fees, or did they, they do the whole $15,000?
They, generally, the way it works is when we go into that agreement, they do the whole $15,000, and they stay with us from beginning to end. So in addition to us checking documentation, they double-check it, so it's nice to have two sets of eyes on that. They brought a lot of experience, I think, in this particular application. They had a start, they had an Economic Development Application already started. The state didn't even have one to give us, so you had to make up your own. They had one that was already started. That saved me a couple days worth of work. We, we created a Food Program one, had to get that verified by the state, so there was a lot of, there was a lot of kind of as-you-go work, and they really helped with getting some of that started.
They earned it.
Yeah, so they are, the, the whole $15,000 is allocated, and that was in that original grant agreement.
Thank you.
I'm a little surprised there weren't more applicants, particularly the lodging sector who we've heard has been challenged by this in particular. There's, apparently, I presume there's two lodging places on the list, just looking at the names, Airliner and Tappy Raton.
Correct.
But there's got to be more within our designated LMI tracts than just two.
Well, and you didn't have to be in an LMI track if you were hospitality. You just had to have more than 51% of your employees qualifying under that LMI, and you had to have the expenses that you wanted reimbursed to be qualifying expenses.
And you couldn't have been reimbursed for them by somebody else?
Correct. And it's, I, I can't say flat out, if you were in this program, no, because there, there's quite a layer of complications to all of that. So, I mean, we, we had, I can tell you had a lot of phone calls prior to the final submittal date of just people verifying and asking questions and things like that, but the 10 applications we got are those who actually put something in, in writing, did, did the work upfront to get the paperwork together.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, any comments from the public? None, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 20-7898 recognizing applicants and allocating funding for the 2020 Kansas Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus CBG CV.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to second to approve Resolution Number 20-7898. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 4-0. Ms. Driscoll, thank you for your work on that.
Thanks so much.
Okay, that will bring us to 7.2.
Item 7.2, Salina Field House Programming.
Okay, Mr. Shealy?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Travis Shaley with the Salina Parks and Recreation, Recreation Superintendent. As you recall, October 19th, city commission voted to reopen the Salina Field House under a modified approach, and that approach included operational hours, changing those from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. for rentals, and then we're covering that with full-time staff supervising the programming, which is indoor footsaw, and you did authorize part-time staff for that program. It also included continuing the approach with events and tournaments moving forward into the 2021 season. You can catch those on our website. It is www.salinafieldhouse.com. There's a list of, of events that we have coming up. Our first one is actually this weekend, MAYB tournament with 25, 30 teams. So looking forward to that event. You also gave us some direction for doing some program research of the typical programming that we do offer during this time of winter, November through early March, and that included volleyball, basketball, drop-in, those type of things. In doing so, we got to the drawing board, and so I gave you a list here of the traditional programming that we do offer, and giving you a list there of number of teams that has typically been in those realms, the season that we start and end. As you can see, we kind of have a magnitude of teams there, starting in November through March, and that doesn't include the footsaw that you already pre-approved. We have 20 to 30 teams in there, so we do have a lot of teams, a lot of programming going on during that time. So what we did is started evaluating each program individually, how it affects full-time staff that we currently have, part-time staff, 2020 expenses, and then expenses moving forward. So the next couple slides, tried to break that down to you, and then the first one was adult winter volleyball. This is a great program for our adults, men and women. What I've learned over the years is you don't schedule anything on Thursday nights for those women because that's their, that's their time. That's their ladies' night out, so that's their time away from kids. Not only that we have this program, and this is November through February, but we, we offer this program year-round. So we do have a spring season that goes March through May, then we have a summer season, June through July, then we have a fall season, September through November, so we offer it year-round. We do have a co-ed program. It's on Mondays. It's, it's a good program as far as we have leagues for recreational players. We have leagues for more your intermediate or competitive players, so a very good program. We do have our full-time supervisor currently on staff. What we would need with this program would be the ability to hire six officials that we commonly use for this program to rotate through. There's no scorekeepers needed for this program, and then we recommend offering this program December through March. So it would be a little delayed start, but this is a team registration program, so we've been contacted by these teams currently, and they're, they're ready to go, and it doesn't take as much time to, to get to your league as, as an individual program would be, okay? So we can start this one definitely in, in December. The youth competitive basketball, this is a program we started when the Field House started. We, we knew it would go. We offered it the first year. We're in there 25, 30 teams usually, so it's a good program. It's offered to those team, again, team registration program, to those teams that are intermediate, competitive, so the idea with that... Uh, so the idea with that is those third through sixth grade boys and girls, they they can play on a a league night or a Tuesday night, they can get a game in there and then those are the teams who play on the weekends. With this program, we currently have our full-time supervisor on staff. Um, we would need permission to hire some officials, approximately twenty plus that we have on our list. And then for this program, we would need scorekeepers. It's 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 up and down action, it's keeping time, it's keeping score, so we we need that ability as well. We think we can uh start this program as normal. So what we would do is start January, it's on a Tuesday night, uh right away in January and end by February. Youth recreational basketball, this one's a little more complex, as you can see. It is an individual registration program, uh great program. It's for the kiddos who aren't currently on a team. As for those kiddos who unfortunately may have been cut from the middle school program, we we know who those coaches are at the middle school program. Being a position to cut kids, not good, but we hand them the registration form and at least they have the opportunity to still play. That's what we're here for. It it's more of your recreational program. It's more in-depth, though, it takes more time. We we skill assess each kid. We evaluate them and then we form teams as equally as possible. That does take some time. We find the coaches, we schedule the practices for them, we schedule the games, we get the um the officials, the uniforms, all that stuff. So it is more time extensive. Um, something to note here is uh if we were approved tonight, it we would have to uh make a quick turnaround with this one, though, in in order to even start games by January. But we think we can do it. Um, but I wanted to note on that marketing tool there, Peach Jar is not available currently right now to get this out to the kids, but we will try to find other avenues to get it out to the community and then uh start forming teams or taking registrations. Uh, we do currently have the full-time supervisor on staff to perform this. Uh, we just again need the ability to hire the officials. That is not um twenty plus twenty, it's the same twenty-plus officials for the competitive program, okay? So we usually have about uh twenty to twenty-five on staff and then we would need the scorekeepers as well. But we recommend that we could start this program, but it would be modified, we could not start it until January. High school basketball, uh this is a team, predominantly teams, they come to us and say, I want to be on on the same team as Billy or Bob or whoever, but we do uh sign individuals as well that maybe are not on a team. We've done that. It provides an opportunity for those kids who are do not play for their high school. Maybe they were cut from the high school team, so it's been a good one. Uh, we see a lot of girls and boys on the same team there, more of co-ed and laid back and and having a good time, so so good program. It typically starts in January on Sunday afternoons. Uh, Sundays is a good time to for those high school kids to recreate. The challenge is again is uh having part-time staff and uh the ability to hire them and scorekeepers. This is the big one, uh the full-time supervisor position for this program who normally oversees this, uh that position is currently vacant. So for that reason, uh we're not recommending to, we're recommending to cancel this program for the season. The adult basketball, the team registration, again, uh quicker turnaround. It's offered for the men and women who uh still want to recreate. We do have some more of your recreational leagues for that and then we do have kind of a competitive or championship league for that. We typically start in December and it's played during the week, so two to three nights a week and that runs through about early March. Uh, we could program uh starting in January, but again, the challenges of this is the ability to hire some part-time officials and scorekeepers. Same as high school, where we we currently do not have a full-time uh supervisor for this program.
Which days of the week?
Which days? I'm sorry, uh Mondays, Wednesdays and Thursdays.
Is this a second full-time person or would the person you spoke of before be the same?
Same one, uh supervised both programs. I want to mention that that position is, uh we just got advertised uh last week.
Are there people that have to really come up to speed or is this something that, you know, if you're a sports guy, you know, you'll
You gotta have some sports knowledge.
And the graphing, you can figure it out.
Uh, sports knowledge is great, um and getting that position early to mid-December would be crucial of getting aware of the program, handling the teams uh um registration, all those type of administrative things before you start the game scheduling, getting staff, part-time staff, all that stuff.
What happened to that full-time staff person?
Um, that position, his last day was October twenty-ninth and um he gave us two weeks and then the following week we had um started advertising. Turf soccer, uh as you know, you approved the indoor footsaw and that occurs November through December. And then it seems like the very next weekend, we're playing on the turf, uh just to have a continuous soccer program. It is a team registration program, it's a good one. Uh, it we do have youth, high school and adult divisions. The youth play more of a three V three format going uh short-sided. It's quick, it's a real quick, fast game. The high school and adults play crossways. Uh, it's again, it's his faster pace and then that gives them the uh ability to train for the uh spring season to come. This program typically runs January through early March uh and following the indoor footsaw season. With the, we do have the existing full-time supervisor on staff. Uh, we have the uh officials in place for the footsaw. We would need ability to hire more, you can never have enough officials. Uh, so, but with that, staff recommends that we uh we program this league as normal. It would start in January and it goes through about early mid-March. Um, the high school division, you do have to be done by the end of February because those kiddos, they they're trying out for spring sports, uh very first of March, so that division you have to be done. Same thing with the high school basketball, it has to be done at a certain time.
Commissioners, I'm sure you recall this, but I think for anyone listening at home, it bears clarifying that your ability to pre-approve the the soccer program was as a result of reimbursement funding that that the soccer club and the Parks Department was able to secure. So if we kind of work our way back through that timeline, we didn't bring on part-time staffing. Baseball enthusiasts stepped up and and came up with funding and an approach where they could help us stand up baseball. Then soccer approached us and asked how how come they couldn't come up with something similar, they were able to put a program together. So uh there is, I know there's conversation in the community about pro soccer, pro baseball, but all of this has been in response to our budget challenges, the direction that you provided and then the initiative at both the baseball and soccer enthusiasts were able to take and help us solve these problems.
Uh, drop-in, I know a couple of commissioners mentioned drop-in and our drop-in program, typically we have some open dates and times for people to drop in. Uh, it consists a lot of kiddos, moms, dads coming in, shooting baskets, uh getting their sweat on, doing that. And then uh the non-work days for for those guys and then the non-school days for the high schoolers or the the kids. We do set up those times, we we uh try to do our homework on the front side and and see what days they're not in in session. So we offer that as well. And then pickleball, pickleball's come on, uh we do offer that that uh set dates and times for them. Those mainly consist of your retirees or just people who's picked up the game and and like the game. Uh, the challenges with this, I I think we we are, we're pretty much set up, ready to go for basketball and volleyball. However, we do need a new pickleball system and then I did that uh pricing, so I included that in the costs uh in the next couple of sheets here. With the the two P M to ten P M modified hours, uh I did include the expenses to keep this from noon to two uh with part-time staff and uh listed those there for November and December and then again through uh January through March to keep there at at that same time. Summary, uh we we would need part-time staff to conduct these leagues, we we just will. Uh, estimated needs, again, uh I think six volleyball officials, the the basketball officials, some scorekeepers, uh additional referees, if we can find them, beyond eight that we have. And then January through March, again, we would need uh the ability to have some facility supervisors, we just would. Um, if any further programming would take place in that November, December, uh remember, we're conducting uh all the coverage right now, November through December with full-time staff. Not only uh, I I just wanted to mention, it's it's not that we don't want to offer the programs, it's just a full-time staff member, that position is is currently vacant. Here's the meat and potatoes, I hope you can see that. And I tried to list each program individually, typically the number of teams, the revenues. And then I know it's important to recognize what expenses would be added to this current budget of two thousand twenty. So I tried to break those down individually as as much as possible and then the part-time expense uh expenses yet on this budget cycle. And then uh listed out expenses moving forward into the next budget year, uh the pre-approved budget that you you've already uh approved. Total program expenses, cost recovery, and then did factor in some direct or in and indirect cost recoveries in there. What season we typically run these programs and then our recommendation. I know there's a lot going on in there, but I did the best I could to kind of put everything on one sheet. Uh, so these are leagues right here and then we go down to the next of of drop-in because it's not a league, it's just a a program that we offered. Tried to provide some data uh in the same columns there. So, two thousand twenty, and this is just expenses beyond our current status. And that's uh four thousand and ten dollars right there. Um, moving forward into January and March, uh to have that part-time facility supervisor. And what I did there is went to last year's budget and pulled all the payroll from January through March to come up with that number of a projected estimate. The expenses associated with taking temperature uh during that time. Total projected uh program expenses. And then a total projected of forty-four thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars. And then total projected revenues within just programming. Coming to the last slide, recommendation and the option one is to vote and authorize the projected expenses of forty-four thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars for the Salina Fieldhouse Modified Programming Approach uh illustrated on that sheet I just showed you. And that goes from November through March of two thousand twenty-one. Option two is postpone pro-programming consideration to a specified date and time and provide staff direction. Regarding additional information or amendments, the city commission would like to request for their further consideration. Option three, vote for no programming in the Salina Fieldhouse, November through March. We recommend option one. With that, I'll bring it back to commission.
Questions or comments from Commissioners?
Uh, what would be your rough estimate, if you have one, on the number of youth that would be in the high school basketball program, January, February and the men's basketball? I think that was what, January to March, I think it was.
As far as participants or expenses or?
Participants.
Participants, yeah, sure. Uh, the high school, we've had, since I've been here, anywhere from ten to twenty-four teams in that thing. So last year, we had thirteen. It just depends how many kiddos go out for high school basketball or has that interest. Uh, but so little wide variety there, but it's been a popular program. The the adult, we had fourteen teams last year.
I know January and February, there's not too much opportunity for recreation unless you like sitting on a couch watching
Sure.
NFL playoff games, uh it'd be just, it's it's a nice outlet.
Yes.
Uh, particularly for those kids who need to hone their hone their skills. So the the only impediment to that program is your fear that the supervisor position would not be filled in time to ramp the program up?
Right, so ideally, we would like that position December, you know, to to be able to administratively handle that thing, that program, January, February. I just can't sit here and tell you uh that we can definitely do that. We we just got uh advertised for the position. Um, it has two weeks and then selecting candidates, interviewing, selecting the candidate, uh that candidate given their notice. I just, I can't promise that.
So this would be then a new full-time department employee for you then?
It would replace an existing position, yes.
So this would just be that person's first assignment, so to speak?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, I want to commend the staff, you did exactly what we asked you to do back on October nineteenth. I appreciate the fact that there's a staff recommendation. Uh, I do have a concern and to be honest, I'd like to see us defer the decision for at least two weeks. Uh, back on October nineteenth and the two weeks prior to that, we had had a hundred and forty-one new covid cases and that number had been flat for about three weeks, three to four weeks. In other words, it had stayed about the same. Last Friday, that number was two hundred and eighty-four. In other words, our case count has doubled in the past two and a half weeks. I have a real concern about us opening programming under those circumstances. I just, I you know, I I am, I think it'd be great to do this, I think people want to do it. Uh, the expense doesn't bother me at all, you know, all of that. But I do have a concern about, you know, fanning the flames, so to speak, of the pandemic.
That is a recent development and I am aware of it, the reason, I didn't task Parks Department with any of that.
I understand that and I'm not trying to put Mr. Sheil on the spot with that. I'm just saying that's something that we couldn't have known at that time, but that we do know now. And I, you know, the case count today isn't out yet, so I'm I'm not sure what'll happen today. But it has been for the last couple of weeks, a very steep increase. And I don't know if that's related, you know, and that parallels the state of Kansas. Uh, it's also been a very steep increase statewide, so I don't think it's anything local that's driving that. I don't know what's driving it. You know, I would I would like to see at some point, you know, and this is kind of off the topic, some kind of update from the Health Department on, you know, if they have any insight to that and what the what the county uh whose lead agency on this actually, uh if they have any plans for dealing with those circumstances. So I I'd be in favor of deferring it for a couple of weeks at least.
At what point does delaying the programming affect your ability to provide the programming? Is two weeks too much?
Uh, some of these are a tight window. I uh, what I propose to you today is what we could do today. I would have to go back to the drawing board and I'm just assuming it would delay some of those start times.
Yeah, some of the start times before January, certainly I can see where that would be a problem.
Yes.
Yeah, because you have to get people on board, you've got to get registrations done.
Yep, it does take time. The individual one takes the most time, the team, uh it takes time, but not as much.
Are some of these ones that you can do provisional scheduling or or signing teams up? Or at least get coaches and managers to at least, you know, get some tentative rosters together? Because I mean, you know, if things go south in a hurry, I mean, the least of our concerns is going to be that the fieldhouse is shut down, I mean. Um, you know, so, you know, if we don't get to that disaster state. Uh, and and I I agree with Commissioner Franz, uh in fact, I was gonna put in a plug for two of the programs, I might get uh canceled here, but um it's, yeah, the next, unfortunately, I wish I could say it was just two weeks would be but if it if it's a runaway train, then it's going to go longer than
But if, if, if it's a runaway train, then it's going to go longer than two weeks.
And I like say, I don't know what's driving this most recent, recent spike. And I'm, I'm hoping that maybe the county health officer could give us some insight to that. Uh, I hate to start this thing and then two weeks down the road or three weeks down the road, we say, wait a minute, we can't do any of this. And we've got people signing up for programs already and, you know.
Well, you know, if they sign, I mean, like I said, if, if, if things get shut down, it won't be just the recreation that gets shut down. I, you know, and that-
That is, that is true.
That part of my brain says, okay, well, I'll start the, the planning. I mean, if, if, if it gets real bad, uh, folks would be more worried about, do they have a job rather than, you know, can they go play ball?
And commissioners, I honestly don't know how that might play out. One scenario is some type of policy decision that recommends, you know, additional measures that feel like a shutdown. The other could very well be just conversation about causes and effect and preventative measures, where you find yourselves revisiting this policy decision kind of on its own, whether you think it's advisable to open the fieldhouse, even though there may not be a directive that has to be complied with from the health department. And as we know, uh, the governor's, uh, in a recommendation mode rather than a executive order mode at this point. So I think it, I'm speculating, but it could go one of two ways. There could be clear directive, or you could find yourself having to make a, uh, somewhat informed scientific policy decision about, uh, COVID and whether this is advisable.
And the two council programs, uh, those are both teams for, are, are they easy to ramp up? Let's say if you hire a part-time, I mean, full-time supervisor, he's, he or she is up to speed by mid-December, is that something you could start three to four weeks? But you said they have to be done by the end of February.
They do. Uh, it's possible. Yeah. It's team registration, you have a little quicker turnaround. But ideally, you would want that staff member on, on board early December, mid-December, uh, to start it in January.
Is there no contingency plan for, for staff, you know, resignations? I mean, I'm a little taken back that we would cancel two programs because of a full-time staff person leaving. I mean, this, this is an opportunity, this could happen every, you know, you know, that just happens to be we're coming, you know, we're dealing with COVID. But if this was a regular season and we didn't have COVID and we didn't have that full-time person, we would not be able to, eh, offer these?
We got two other staff members that are programming. And one of them is youth basketball with that, uh, recreation program. And then the competitive, uh, basketball program, um, plus running volleyball with another staff member running, running all the soccer as well.
And then we've also committed full-time staff to take temperatures and man the, their staff the door.
Something else to consider is we also have other vacancies from retirements in the recreation department that we haven't filled either. So it isn't that just as one person. We have several positions that are vacant right now due to retirement.
Is that due to COVID or is that just due to retirements?
Well, they retired based on what was going on with the COVID events, but they, they did just, they retired.
I'm not sure how the public looks at telling, we're not going to have leagues just because of lack of staffing, but I don't.
My feeling is we should fill that full-time position and, uh, move forward with the high school, school basketball and the adult rec. And, uh, be ready to take up the drop-ins. Um, I think people are going to self-regulate themselves. Certainly if a member of a team gets COVID, they're gonna all be quarantined and they just won't be playing that week. So for the next two weeks, uh, that, that's my opinion.
I would actually, sure. And again, assuming we can get people in, I should ask this earlier. Are, are you placing a max limit on the number of heads that can be in the building at one time?
Yes, we have, uh, two partic-, or spectators per participant is, is within that COVID guidelines.
But Ian, belonging further that, is there a, just a maximum number of people who can be under the roof?
We do have a mo-, uh, maximum occupancy of the building.
That, that's more fire related rather than-
Yes.
Health department-
Correct.
Suggested, okay. Uh, what's your guess of the number of folks who would typically come in for the drop-in between 12 and noon? Because I, I could think of, you know, folks who work evenings, you know, for whom that's, well, it's a great time to go, or folks who like to go during lunch hour.
We've had anywhere from 30 to 40 to four. You know, it just depends on the day, uh, maybe the weather. Uh, again, those, those days the school was closed or not in session, we saw a, a good participation rate. On the, the pickleball, you had your, your, your ones who showed up every day, eight to 10 of them, 12 of them, sometimes more. So it's just, uh, a wide variety.
You have any gut feeling as to whether or not you're gonna get a decent number of candidates to apply for these jobs? Just from past experience?
I just can't give you a date, uh, you know, in front of you right now of, there's some elements in place. If we, uh, interviewing to selecting that candidate, what conditions that candidate has of putting their two weeks in, I, I don't know that.
Historically, have you hired from Salina or most of your candidates come from outside the city?
Uh, both. And, um, we put it out on K, KRPA, which is Kansas Recreation Parks Association. Uh, before I came back over here, I had three responses from that website. So it's not only within city of Salina, uh, but we've, we've advertised within our state as well.
I don't know if a compromise would be to move forward with what you have and revisit the council programs in two or three weeks?
Well, I think that's our commitment to you is if we're able to fill the position, we'll carry them forward. And of the, the two programs, um, the high school program is date-sensitive, the other is not. So assuming we can fill the position, um, we can adjust the timing, hopefully of both of them, but at least of one.
Are there any other avenues in town for those kids who don't make their high school teams that, you know, who would be in this?
As far as, other than drop-in, I'm not aware of any. That's why we've had a pretty popular program.
As, as far as the, the concern about COVID goes, I think we should try to move forward. And, and if we find out that these activities are a community spread, then I think we have to deal with it. And I think whenever we send out notification to individuals, we're trying to put leagues together, that should be part of our, our notices, you know, this is, uh, barring any circumstances that would cause us to shut it down due to, to, to COVID, to 19, so.
In, in March, we did, we did have some rentals and that type of thing. And we did refund those, you know, according to, in response to COVID.
Any other? I guess my only comment is I am disappointed that we have to, I can't force you to do high school rec basketball and adult rec basketball. It just seems, uh, just seems like it's, uh, not very well thought out that we can't, we don't have staff to do that because we're always going to be at the opportunity to have a staff member resign at some point, that there's not a contingency there. So I'm guessing that won't be met very favorably by the public, so.
Are there other departments who could lend an employee to do the temperatures?
Looking at you because you're, you're, you're the one umbrella person.
I'm not going to say that there aren't additional staff somewhere. They, I mean, that's not part of this number, part of this expense. We're trying to kind of use park staff because they can manage that schedule. This is, wouldn't be a full-time responsibility of a staff person. We'd be bouncing them back and forth between responsibilities, but, um...
If I, if I might, we do have a lot of shortages across the board, um, in a lot of different positions. So I'm doubtful that we'd be able to find somebody and pull them. And I do want to just mention, um, we have been pretty, um, intentional about the way we filled our positions. So we had a couple of retirements. We didn't just fill those automatically. And we've had a lot of talks about how we were going to transition. And we kind of used this COVID timeframe to scale back and kind of look at, you know, what can we do with those positions? So we're not hiring back everybody in the same way that we did before. We're actually, the plan is to reduce one of those positions out, change it a little bit. Um, so, so it's not that we just didn't hire somebody or that the timing didn't work out. We've really been intentional about how do we, you know, reorganize as some of those positions went away. So it's, it's not like we just didn't hire them and we didn't have a plan. We've really been intentional about how we, we looked at that. So it, it did happen, you know, that we, you know, we don't have the staff right now for that program. But, you know, certainly if we were able to get somebody, we would do everything we can to ramp those back up.
And it's kind of been a progression of responding to COVID as we didn't hire part-time staffing. We put on a hiring freeze. We tried to address budget. And then as we progressed back into this and made commitment, staffing commitments to take temperatures and, and staff the door differently so we could open the fieldhouse, that impacted staffing levels as well.
Is there an auxiliary board for the?
No, not really. I, the, you know, the part-time, uh, referees and scorekeepers are a resource, but, um, they just drop in as scheduled. They're not organizing it, uh, start to finish. I think, I'm hopeful that the timeline will play itself out, that we can get someone hired and get them in and, and meet the schedule.
Sure.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Okay. If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Well, again, I think we should move forward with trying to fill that full-time position and providing, uh, uh, the rec and the high school basketball leagues. I would make the motion that we vote to authorize the projected expenses, uh, of $44,000 for the proposed, proposed Salina Fieldhouse Modified Programming Approach for November 2020 to March 2021. And, uh, including, uh, high school recreational basketball, adult rec comp basketball and drop-ins, uh, assuming that we fill the full-time position.
I'll second so we can get discussion.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the projected expenses of $44,383, um, for, uh, programming from November 20th through March 21st, um, hopefully including high school rec basketball and adult rec basketball if staff is hired in timely manner.
Question, so the way this is phrased then, I'm assuming there would have to be a point in time in the near future at which we would come back and then make a decision on the three programs in question?
Well, in all honesty, typically this would be done at the staff level. The only reason it's before you is the governing body is the COVID aspects of it. And so as we go into the 2021 budget, that, that budget is, is provided for, it's really, uh, the decision point for you is the transition from the COVID shutdown back to operations in light of both the health aspects and the financial aspects of what we projected the impacts of COVID to be. Other than that, we'd be staffing this through at, at staff level.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That passes three to one. Okay. We have no development business. Does, uh, any commissioner have other business to bring before us?
Well, as I said, I would like to hear a, an update from the county health officer on, um, how they perceive our status is given recent trends and what their proactive plan is moving forward if those trends do not modify on their own. In other words, how, how are they planning to address, uh, the continued increase in cases?
I guess, would you be willing to approach the county to come and do a short presentation?
Certainly. If there's consensus on the part of the governing body, I'd be happy to extend that invitation. I think they'd be willing to, to do that.
And, and I think one of the conversations maybe needs to be had is that, that this falls under the county as far as the health department, as far as dealing with the COVID. But I think a lot of the citizens look to us for enforcement because of it, majority of it being within the city limits. So I think that would be, be good to hear from him.
Yeah, I think it's pretty clear that the county's the lead, the lead agency on this. But, you know, as with the mask, masking requirement, the city had to step forward and take action first. So I think we have a record with the citizens in saying if, if they don't do it, they expect us to. So, uh, you know, maybe we, we just have to have that conversation, I think.
Is that, just to confirm, is that the consensus of the group?
Yeah. And when you say county, you're referring to the county health officer?
Or representative. I mean, I don't know what, what, uh, Mr. Tiller's, is that the correct name? Mr. Tiller's, uh, availability is, but I would like to see this sooner rather than later, simply because of the steepness of the curve right now.
Any other?
I can certainly extend that invitation.
Any other items? No, no, except a motion. I got a motion to adjourn. I have a second.
Second.
Motion, second adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. See everyone next week.
I'm sorry, what? Okay. That's about the same as it was yesterday, uh, last Friday. But it covers a three-day period, so it may be a little bit less on a daily basis.
Or nobody went in for testing over the weekend?
Mr. Trag, uh, proclamations are usually brought to the city? You know, typically.
Typically issued by outside parties. One of these, making extended policy waters would be a parallel. Other than, you know, they didn't recognize the citizen, uh, life-saving or, uh, police officer required by the government. More typical around the middle, uh, in response to their request.